Good evening, you guys. Thank you all for coming back and doing this on a Thursday night. Thank you, candidates, for giving your Thursday night. We know this takes away from your family and your time at home, and we appreciate this. YMA, thank you guys for doing this. Thank you for recording this and sharing this so people of Arlington are able to hear from the candidates and who they are voting for. So we appreciate you. Thank you. We are going to start right here is our timekeeper. He is going to hold up the cards. We are so grateful for Stefan.
This will be 30 seconds. And then this will be, you know, when you're... Oops, we need to stop.
So if you will look towards him, he will guide you during this. We are going to start out and let you do a brief introduction of yourselves. Tell us a little bit about you, a little bit about your background, and what is going to be able to come into play when you are running? These are what the voters want to know about. So if you would take... You have 1 minute and 30 seconds. And Stefan, we are going to go ahead and start with you, Mrs. Jackson.
Oh, thank you. Oh, good.
We're just going to pass this down.
Good evening. I'm Daphne Jackson, and I am running for Arlington School Board Place... I'm sorry. Arlington School Board Trustee Place Number Four. And I want to thank the young men of Arlington for giving us this opportunity tonight to share our thoughts and concern. I am here. Everyone says the parents need to get involved. I am a parent, and I am involved. So with that being said, again, my name... Again, my name is Daphne Jackson, and I am a parent, and I am involved. So thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Anita Scott, and born and raised in Oak Cliff, Dallas, and a resident of Arlington for a few years now. My interest in running for School Board of Education is because of what I experienced as a classroom teacher at the middle school level and high school level for a few years. My students routinely moaned and grieved when it was time for them to leave my classroom. And my ego took that very well. I thought I was an amazing teacher. And after a couple of years of that, though, I thought there's a disservice when my students are not mentioning how much affection and adoration and admiration they have for their other teachers. So I considered that a disservice that they just longed to be in the English classroom and did not long to be in other classrooms. So I decided to be the eighth grade department lead so I could not just impact my classroom, but only... But also impact the hallway. And then when I saw the impact that we needed to see in successful measures, then I decided to step out of the classroom to impact the campus. So then when we began to see the measures that we needed to see, I thought, instead of just impacting a class and a hallway and a campus, let me now impact a district and a community.
I want to thank the YMA and also the Council of PTAs in Brooklyn, the bond. Both of you guys have organizations that really give back to the community and especially with the service you guys provide with this forum in particular. My name's David Wilbanks, and I'm a candidate for Place Four. I'm a sixth-generation Texan, and since 1995, my wife and I have made Arlington our home, and we chose it because of the schools here. My two kids are proud graduates of AIST, and they're realizing their dreams because of AIST. After successfully selling my software company in a short sabbatical, my family had the opportunity to move back, and we specifically chose Arlington because of the quality of education my daughter received in elementary school. We wanted the same for my son. But a few years after starting back at Butler Elementary, we noticed a trend with a few of the parents electing to move for, quote, "preen or pastures." We could have done the same thing. We could have packed up and moved to Mansfield or Keller, but no, we decided to roll up our sleeves and make Arlington and AIST a better place. After the last 10 years, I've done just that by serving on numerous committees with the district, including chairing the Financial Futures Committee and putting together the two bond packages that have transformed this district for the better and realized my dreams of providing the schools parents demand and our students deserve. I appreciate your vote.
Hello. My name is Kelly Burke, and I'm running for Place Five. I am a close-to-20-year Arlington resident, husband, father, business owner. I own a daycare with my wife, Ms. Burke's Christian Academy, named after her. We have about 90 kids, so they keep me pretty busy during the week. I'm also in a fitness center here. I always have been passionate about children, even at a young age. I figured maybe one day I'd be a, you know, adopt some children or be a foster parent or something like that. When I was younger, I worked at a boarding school when I was 21 years old. I've always had a compassion for kids and little boys, as a matter of fact, for that matter. Have always, you know, been in love with the fact of mentoring young men, and I think it's very important. And so when I ran for mayor last campaign season, one of my campaign points that I strongly hit on was education because I believe that our children are the future, and they're our future leaders here. And I believe it's very important for us to put our focus on our children and the education of Arlington, Texas. Thank you.
My name is Justin Chapa. I'm currently on the School Board in Place Five. I'm running again because I believe in the power of public education because it's been the thing that has made who I am today in my own life. I grew up here in Arlington over on the east side of town, over by the GM factory, went to Sam Houston High School, and then because of the education I received in AIST, had the opportunity of a lifetime to go to Harvard University in Cambridge, Massachusetts. And while I was there, made the decision that I wanted to be a teacher, but I was the first person in my family to go to college, and so I had family pressure to maybe look for something else as well because we didn't know lawyers, we didn't know what to expect. That we always respected lawyers, so that seemed like a good thing for me to do. I had a political science degree, and so I found a program that allowed me to do both. I joined a program called Teach for America. I ended up teaching 12th grade government economics down in Brownsville, Texas, at Rivera High School, about five minutes from the border, and also had deferred admission to Stanford Law School. I actually loved teaching. I wanted to stay teaching longer, but I couldn't. Couldn't because I'd had to reply to law school. So I ended up going to law school, ended up moving back here with my high school sweetheart. We were married. I had my son Benjamin, who's here, and practiced law. But I never really left education, and I've been on the School Board for four and a half years, was on citizen committees before that. And it's a little interesting because of my day job, I'm actually a litigator. I litigate against government regulators that are disputes, usually with businesses, but sometimes people, and then by night, I'm a government official. So I have a little bit of cognitive dissonance because I see both sides of that coin.
We are going to start with you this time, and the question is, for 1 minute and 30 seconds, your response time. If elected, what two issues would you give the most attention and resources to?
Thank you for that question, Brooklyn. If elected, my... That question was also asked to the panel and I heard... To the city council panel, and I heard them say, "Well, that's a hard one because there are so many issues that you want to tackle." But honestly, right up front for the School Board would definitely be curriculum as well as teacher pay. And those are two primary because to have teachers stay in the classroom is essential. It's no secret that right now teachers are leaving the districts by the droves, and they're not going necessarily to other districts. They're joining other industries because of compensation and benefits. And so we want to keep our teachers in the classroom in order to give them and teach them the curriculum that we need. So those are the two issues that I would address right up front, curriculum and teacher pay and incentives.
Thank you for the question. There's no doubt the two biggest issues that we face in education today is the seismic disruption that occurred because of COVID. The learning loss for our children across the country and even across the world is significant, and it's going to take a lot of work to get these kids back on track. At the same time, the last two years have been hard on all of our teachers. As my opponent mentioned, there is a dearth of new teachers electing to go into the profession. There was one before COVID. It's even worse now. We are really looking at the abyss when it comes to the pipeline of new teachers that we need to help get these kids back on track. At the same time, we have seen attrition in the ranks, and we're losing good teachers. Teachers were overworked and overburdened before COVID. They're even more so now. We need to support the teachers.
Thank you. Two of the main issues I would like to focus on immediately. One would be the violence in our schools, and number two would be coping with our teachers. Let me just read you down something real quick. This is from one of our high schools, from Martin. "I have been doing this for over 30 years. I can't manage my classroom anymore. Kids tell me to go F myself. There are no consequences. I dare not go into the hall. We are the so-called good school." I have tons of these. I read through them every day. So that would be one of my number-one issues is to address the violence in our schools. And we would do that as a board. I'm not trying to say I'm going to come in and, you know, miraculously do this by myself as a board. That would be one of the first things that I would like to tackle. And I'm sure everybody knows about this on this board, and I'm not trying to speak like, you know, they don't know about it. But as for me, number two is to prepare our teachers. And so also maybe look at the administrator side. Since we're struggling with our teachers, maybe we can look at the administration and figure out if we can do some kind of help there. Maybe administrators can play some time in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Wilbanks. The very first priority for, I think, anybody involved in education is recovering from the COVID epidemic. That was a two-year substantial disruption of education. I know a lot of things went back to normal at the beginning of this year, but in education it didn't. We were having issues with COVID even into the fall and winter with the Omicron surge. We had campuses that had grades out for five, six, seven days in a row. We had big teacher shortages of the teachers that we did have. And because of the learning deficits that came about during COVID, we have a long way to get our kids back there. Part of the problem is that everybody else does too. So you might have heard that we got a lot of funding from the federal government in SIR funds, but everybody else has those too, and everybody else is going out in the market to try to get the same resources at the same time. So I think it's a paramount focus for us as a board to come up with a plan to get that back, and we have adopted a five-year plan that I think is achievable for our teachers. The second thing, and hopefully we can touch on this later, I think there's been a seismic shift too in the way that education is viewed in society, and a lot of it is built on rhetoric about things that are just not true. And I'd like to go into more detail about that if I had time later, and maybe we won't.
Thank you. Thank you. There are two things I would love to work on. The first thing is to get those predators out of our schools. The ones that's threatening the teachers, the ones that's making the students uncomfortable, get them out. The second thing I would rather... I would like to do is put in safety precautions, metal detectors, sensors, so I mean, for all children and our teachers can feel welcome in a safe place. So the first thing I would do is get all those predators that's not coming to school for the right reason, get them out of school. Intimidating our teachers, intimidating our students, making disruption in the class, that's the first thing that needs to be addressed at AISD. Thank you.
Our third question, Mr. Wilbanks. You spoke a minute ago about the teacher shortage, and this question reflects that. Cities across the state and nation are facing a shortage. What steps will you take and what will you do to retain the current teachers here in AIST?
Brooklyn, before we get started, I just want to clarify, do we have 1 minute or 1 minute and a half?
1 minute and a half.
Yeah, because it just seemed like it was...
Going by too fast?
Yeah.
A minute and a half.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brooklyn, for that question because we are staring at an abyss with the lack of pipeline of new teachers and the frustrations that our current teachers are experiencing. So first and foremost, we need to pay them like professionals. That's why my colleagues and I have voted for two back-to-back 4% raises, and we need to think outside the box. We have, as passed within 2019, an opportunity to pay teachers over $100,000 and incentivize them to go to the schools that need them the most with the highest economically disadvantaged students and our rural students. And this isn't performance-based pay that's been rejected by teachers before, but it does allow them to get certifications and then take those certifications, and the state will pay the difference, not the school district. We need to look at what's called the teacher incentive allotment because I think that has a real chance of helping bring in that pipeline of new teachers again. But we absolutely have to take everything off their plate, the administrative burdens that they're under, and let them do the one thing they're passionate about, and we know they can do well, and that's teach our students. We need to maximize the amount of time they're spending on teaching students and not doing administrative burdens or doing unnecessary professional development.
We need to definitely pay them. We look at the 4% raise, a 4% over an annual salary over a year. That's only $2,000 a year. What's that, $100 something dollars a month? That's not really a lot of money. So that would definitely be the first thing that we need to focus on is paying our teachers. The second thing is kind of what I may have mentioned to earlier is with the administration. So with administrators, I would propose to new administrators, when they're coming out and you're looking for schools to work in, let's push them to go into teaching as well. Maybe we incentivize them to spend a little classroom time, six months to a year. That would also help alleviate some of our teacher shortage as well. Thank you.
I can't agree more again with Mr. Wilbanks. If you follow education generally, I mean, there's always a discussion that teachers are overworked and underpaid, and there was a time in this district where we slacked off from some of the historic competitiveness that we've had. But over the course of the last three years, historic pay raises for the district for the first time, and if anybody can remember, we awarded a bonus for teachers because of the work during the pandemic. And I can proudly say that, along with Mr. Wilbanks and my colleagues in this room, that the AIST is the top-paying district in DFW according to the UEA salary charts in most tenure ranges, and we intend to keep that competitiveness going forward. So I don't view the raises, as Mr. Burke described them, as some sort of sop that was not significant. I think they were very significant. I also agree with Mr. Wilbanks that the lot depends on administration. We can make sure that our teachers go to a classroom on a campus with a quality administrator because the number-one reason teachers leave the classroom a lot of times isn't because of the students or any of the other issues, a lot of which have been around for decades that people are still trying to struggle to solve, but because of the quality of administrator, their boss. And then I just want to, if I could take a slight deviation, make a point here. I think a fundamental issue in my race is experience, and Mr. Burke has a heart for kids and a heart for education, and I don't doubt that. But he doesn't have experience in public education, and I think that shows from his answer. To be an administrator, it makes no sense to send new administrators back in the classroom because to be an administrator in Texas, you have to have spent at least three years as a classroom teacher already. And so it would make no sense to certify administrators, only to send them right back into the classroom. And I think that's just one example of the inexperience that Mr. Burke has running for the position that he is.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question?
Absolutely. Cities across the nation and here in Arlington are facing a severe teacher shortage. What steps would you do to attract and also retain existing teachers here in the AIST?
Thank you for clarity on that. The first thing I would do is to... This 4% raise that was supposed to be the voters voted for, it wasn't the 4% across the board. Some got four, some got less. So we need to rectify that and make sure that all teachers receive 4%. Another thing I would like to do is to make sure that teachers are getting paid for all the money that they've spent out of pocket for the supplies that they have had to use. Being that the schools have been reimbursed... Well, Ben and Burke received $29 million from COVID, along with $161,000... I'm sorry, $161 billion that we voted on, those two plans, I mean, those bonds that we voted. Teachers should not be paying out of pocket. So we need to make sure that we correct that, and we also need to make sure that we compensate them for that 4% that the voters thought that they were getting across the board.
Thank you. I am going to agree with all of the colleagues up here, all the candidates, about the increasing of teacher pay. Very grateful for the bond that came and even with the funds that came because of COVID in order to increase teacher pay. I would... So I'm echoing that we need to pay our teachers like professionals. I also believe that we need to treat them like professionals, and sometimes there is a dissonance between treating them like professionals. Right now, they carry... I heard Mr. David Wilbanks say, "The administrative burden is overwhelmingly taxing to them." And so they come in with a passion, and then you see the passion in their eyes leave after a few months. And so it is not only are we wanting to treat them like public servants, but I want to say we need to treat them like public leaders. And I heard Mr. Justin say that teachers are leaving not because of student disrespect, not necessarily because of what is happening in the classroom, but they often feel the weight of administrative burdens and often don't feel supported by administrative. So I want to pay them like professionals and treat them like professionals.
Mr. Burke, this question goes to you. How do you see Arlington ISD responding to the competition of charter schools and private schools that have become prevalent in our area?
Oh, great question. I don't think it's any competition at all. I don't think Arlington is competing with any charters or public schools. I haven't seen a mass exiting from public school here in Arlington at all, but I do believe that, you know, on both sides, people just definitely need choices. I mean, so the people that chose private or charter school, you know, they made that choice, but for the most part, I haven't seen any exiting. You know, we own a daycare, like I said, and so, you know, we drop off, you know, 20-plus kids daily, and we talk to several parents, and most of our parents aren't going to charter or private once their kids are old enough, they're going to public school. So on my end, no, I haven't seen a mass exiting yet. Thank you.
Please go right through.
Sure. So I think the district has done a lot to compete with charter schools over the years, and I want to preface this with, I followed charter schools almost since they were inceptioned in the 1990s when I was in college, studied them. And when they first came online, I was really agnostic about charter schools because they promised to provide competition and make sort of stuck in the, you know, stuck in their ways traditional public schools, think a little bit outside the box and do something different. And we can have a separate conversation about whether or not they've strayed from that mission and essentially become a second public school system that does compete with public schools to do essentially the same thing but draining funds from that system. Let's set that aside. But in terms of choice, that's what I think folks like the most about private and charters is it gives them a choice. We've always been a public school district of choice. So something that Arlington's always done, and we're one of the few districts our size to do this, is you can have open transfer within the district as long as space is available at an AIST campus. Doesn't matter what part of town you live in, you can send your kid to another school if you want to that's not your neighborhood school. Something that we've invested a lot of resources in over the last six years, seven years, starting with the 2014 bond, is we've created specialty programs at schools of choice. So we now have the Corey and Jones Fine Arts Dual Language Academies, which are filing up to the Gun Fine Arts Dual Language Academy and will terminate at Arlington High School. We also have the Pierce STEM Academy, the Crow Leadership Academy, which just became one of the only elementary schools in Texas to be certified by the International Baccalaureate Program. And then we also have another specialty campus at Wimbech Elementary, which is a World Languages Academy. And so I think you're seeing a lot of innovation in AIST to compete with private and charters.
As far as charter schools, if I had a choice at this point, I would choose a charter school for my child. Because before the pandemic, Arlington Independent School District, the state already had a skip... The state already had a grading system in place. Arlington was receiving a C before pandemic. So just imagine what the kids are receiving right now. So as far as a charter school, if that was my choice, I would definitely choose a charter school. But I also wanted to say that the learning gap is continuing to grow. And last night, we learned that the school district have... The intellects have a five-year plan for these children that's got the gap behind them. These are intellectual people right here, all of them. You know, they're on the school boards, and she's an administrator, and Mr. Burke is a little different. But if this is the administration that we have in place right now, this is the leadership, and our kids are not even able to read, write, or do arithmetic. We need to change this. So that's what my thoughts are.
Would you repeat the question for me, Ms. Brooklyn?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
How do you see Arlington ISD responding to the competitions of charter schools and private schools that have become prevalent in our area?
Thank you so much for repeating. I... First, I want to just acknowledge that I believe charter schools and schools of choice are a reflection of a democracy. And so I believe in the opportunity for charter schools and schools of choice. How I see Arlington responding to it is how Arlington has been responding to it for the past few years now with creating schools of choice where it's not just based on is a student going to college, but now students can invest in a trade. Students can invest in a skill. Students can invest in a career even before they graduate with their high school diploma. And so Arlington recognizes that charter schools or even other schools of choice like STEM schools and magnet schools and performing arts schools. And so now Arlington is responding in that way, which draws in the public and keeps our students in Arlington ISD.
So I'd like to start out by correcting a few things Ms. Jackson said. There are a lot that need correcting, but I'll start out by saying, before the pandemic, Arlington ISD was proudly a B-rated district. We have made great strides, and during the pandemic, our scores were set to increase even higher because of the hard work that our teachers have put in to make sure our kids are succeeding. But as far as competition from charters, competition can be a good thing, and I think if you look at AIST now, it's because we have had to respond and put on our A-game to respond to some of these charter schools, and my son is... Has benefited from that because part of the things we've done, as Mr. Chapa pointed out, is created programs of choice across the district. And like the STEM Academy at Martin High School, which my son just recently graduated from, we've also Corey and Fine Arts Dual Language Academies. And these... The great thing about this system of programs of choice is we've taken traditionally failing schools and turned them into A and B-rated schools. So we need to continue to increase the seats in quality A and B-rated schools by continuing to provide the schools that our parents are demanding and our students deserve.
No, he gets to come back to me.
No.
It's my turn on this question. It's going to be a little bit long-winded, Mr. Chapa, but...
I'm a lawyer. I kind of...
I don't know. I talk a lot, so bear with me. Are you ready, guys? Okay. So here is this one. "As a school board member, how would you respond to the efforts of special interest groups who advocate for the censorship of existing curriculum and perceived by them to be in conflict with their own personal beliefs?"
So I think that's... I mean, that's obviously one of the hot-button issues of our time, but you know, it's not a new one. I mentioned I'm a lawyer, and one of the things that I did in law school, because I was a joint-degree student with the education school, is I wrote a paper on the evolution of student speech and search case law at the Supreme Court. And a lot of the cases that I read dealt with censorship of books back in the '60s, '70s, '80s, whether or not the students had to say the Pledge of Allegiance even as early as the '40s. That's when that issue first came up. And so if you look at the history of these movements, they kind of have been flow, and we're during... We're in a period right now where, for whatever reason, whatever societal influences you want to point to, this is of concern to parents today. But because of that past history, we have ways to address these concerns because they're not new. Every school district in Texas, including AIST, has always had a book challenge policy, and a parent can go down and file a book challenge policy and get a review of a book. We've had that on the books for decades, and parents have not really availed themselves of it, but they are now. What that might lead to is it might mean that that student's... That parent-student doesn't read that book, but it might not remove it from the shelf because it might be appropriate for other children. But there's a policy to handle that. The other thing I would say is that the rhetoric around this, I think, is really doing a disservice to our teachers because I think it does something in a time that's very difficult for them. It creates this idea that teachers are doing something wrong, but they're not. We're hearing that teachers are overworked and overburdened, and they are, and they just don't have time in their day to do the things with these materials that I think a lot of people are saying. And I do think it's sort of a slap at teachers to suggest that they're doing something otherwise.
Thank you. Excuse me. The book challenges in the schools right now is also... Other things that's also been challenged in the schools or challenging in the school. We have the CRT. We have the SE... We have the S... I mean, the CSE. All of these things are being challenged in the schools right now that let you know that our children are jeopardy and that our parents, the parent voice, is not being heard. Because when we find out these things from these intellectual people, it's already in place. place. We did not have the option as a parent to opt in, and if we did, we like to also have the option to opt out. So those are the things that's challenging in the school, along with the book challenges.
Thank you. I like how Mr. Justin said, this is a societal ebb and flow. The conflict that educators are experiencing, the conflict that local school board, state, uh, state school board is experiencing regarding curriculum is not new. It has, it has come back around, there's a recent surge, and I will be one of the first to admit that I am about parent voice. I am anti-philosophical views that bring division into the classroom. I'm always about parent voice, but I will always be about the opposition of what can bring division between races and between genders. So I will always welcome the parent voice, but I, along with the school board, because these decisions do not happen in a silo, they do not happen in isolation. It's the board that comes together to decide what is best and also what is age-appropriate and mentally appropriate for the students in our classrooms.
Thank you. And Ms. Jackson, I, I would like to remind, you know, if you're an informed parent, you would know that in nineteen ninety-five, we did pass a Bill of Rights for Parents, and you do have the option to opt out of anything you don't think is appropriate for your child. But the fact of the matter is, is one of our fundamental roles as a trustee is to represent the values of our community. And right now, more than ever, we need to stop fighting, and parents need to come in because we need their help in the classroom. We need, as Ms. Scott said, we need parents to come and volunteer in the classroom, volunteer in the libraries, and if you see something that you don't agree with, let us know. And as Mr. Chapa pointed out, there are policies in part from that nineteen ninety-five law that allow you to question anything in the library or any curriculum and give you a process to fairly examine it and, and remove it if it is not age-appropriate. So yes, there is a lot of talk, but the fact of the matter is, we've never taught things like CRT, we never will, and we never have. So, um, thank you.
Yeah, I think the main sentiment that we can see across our country and even in our school district is that parents just want to be heard. That's just the main thing, that's what it boils down to. And some parents aren't happy, some parents are. But the ones that aren't, if we're listening, then we're listening. And when we listen, we have to do something about it. And so Chapa is correct, you can opt out, but I've had plenty of parents that contacted me, and they, they, the process wasn't as easy as they thought. So maybe it should be streamlined a little bit better or explained by the board at a meeting, maybe we should call the, the parents and sit together and explain this a little bit more in front of everyone so that they can understand it and be educated on it fully moving forward. But I think that's the main thing, is that, you know, we, we do work with parents, and so if a parent has a concern or an issue, that we need to put our hands around that parent and work with them and fully hear their concerns. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I love your smile.
Thank you.
At the end of your term, how would you measure success in your position? You can also use this time to give any closing remarks that you want. You still have a minute and thirty seconds, but how would you measure success if you were elected?
Thank you for that question. And as I close, I do want to thank Y M A. I want to thank the public for coming out, and also want to thank my constituents and my candidates just for hearing. I always take notes, and I always listen to what you all have to say, and I go home and I chew on it, and I marinate on it. One measure of success, I'm totally going to echo Mr. Justin, is he said, we do what we say we're going to do. If we say we're going to do it, then we need to do it. And that's one measurement of success. Another men of, another measurement of success is to have the public in the school board meetings, to have physical bodies, even if they're streaming. And streaming was, you know, available pre-COVID, but it's to have just involvement and figuring out as a board, not as one person, not as a silo, of ways to gain the public interest and ways to maintain the public interest.
So looking at the end of my term in three years, first and foremost, we've got to be focused on student outcomes. We've set an aggressive plan to get kids back on track. And at the end of three years, are we on the right glide path to increase student outcomes? At the same time, are we doing what we need to do to support our teachers so that they do feel like the professionals that they are and continue to attract the best and the brightest teachers in the area to come work for A I S D? And then for, for our students, the one thing that we've done really well and that I'm proudest of is providing those kind of programs of choice and for the students so that they can explore and realize their dreams, no matter what those dreams are in A I S D. Our Career Tech Center has thirty-nine different certifications, so kids can experiment in things like graphic design, phlebotomy and other nursing skills and automotive. But what we're doing to prepare our kids to be successful, one hundred percent successful in college and career after school, are we expanding those opportunities so that kids can realize their dream, no matter what those dreams are?
Yes, again, like you said, thank you for Y M A for putting this on and inviting us out. I've enjoyed myself. My measure of success, at the end of my term, I would base it off of how many people I touched. In order to know if any man or woman has been successful, you have to look at the people that are around them. Was the board better if I sat on the board? Were the students better? Was the staff better? Administration, principals, teachers? How many of these people know me, know me personally? How many people did I touch, did I help? Not because I'm some great or amazing guy, but because I'm giving of myself, and that's what a servant leader does. One thing I liked about Jim Ross, when Jim Ross took office, when that child died in that splash pad, they asked him, whose fault was it? And you know what that man said? Mine. And we all know, it really wasn't. But he said it was. Why? Because he said, whatever happens on my watch, I will own it. And if I'm elected, whatever happens on my watch, I'll own it. I'll never blame the state, I'll never blame the city, I'll never blame the board, I'll own up to it and say, that's my fault. Let me look into it, let me work on that. Give me your phone number, let me call you, let me follow up with you, send me an email. Because that's what real leaders do. Thank you.
So my, my measure of success has always been, since I've, I've been on the board and even before I, I was involved, and I was involved in citizens committees, is I grew up in this district, and I grew up in a part of town that was not well-represented and, for lack of a better term, the corridors of power. And so it was a, a big part of my life growing up that I felt like I grew up in a part of town that didn't have access to the same opportunities that everybody else, it was maybe looked down on in some way. And I think something you've seen this district commit to over the last ten-plus years in a way that it has not, in my opinion, frankly, before despite well-intentioned people, is to ensure that every kid in this district, regardless of where they grew up or where they come from or what their background is, has access to a quality educational experience, and they may be experiences that they'll never have again, whether it's a quality theater program, whether it's taking a phlebotomy class at the Career Tech Center or, or a metalworking class or a class on pre-law. They have those experiences and they are high quality. I'm not, I'm not concerned about one test score, which is essentially what all of us are judged on now, that everybody here, I think, acknowledges has significant flaws, a lot of people here would like to get rid of it, and that disadvantages districts like A I S D that have a high percentage of socio-economically disadvantaged students. If you look around the district or the area, where are the A grades given out? They're always to the affluent districts. Do you think that the kids there are any smarter than our kids? No, they're not. It's because of a flawed assessment system. Ms. Jackson took a few shots at me tonight, but, and I just want to say, this district before COVID, under the old accountability system, forty percent, forty percent of our campuses earned at least, earned at least one distinction. That's the quality of this district. It's not one letter grade or anything else at the end of my, my tenure. If it remains that way and kids have access to opportunities, then it will be unsuccessful. Thank you.
Thank you. At the end of my term as a school board trustee, I would like to have a true rapport with the parents. I would like to be able to go into the parents whenever they come up to me and ask me what, what education is going on with my kids. I would like to say, we have removed CRT, we have removed SEL, we have removed CSE. All of these things that's in place in these school districts, that these intellect people are saying are not there, they are there. I want to have that rapport with the parents. I also, unlike Mr. Burke's, I'm going to be accountable. Am I going to make mistakes? Absolutely. But one thing I'm going to do is say, Daphne, did you do that? Yes, I did that. It's one thing I wish I was able to offer y'all this evening. You remember that old Joe Clark movie? He offered you this to get those, those words I can't say in here, but those predators out of school? I would like to offer you that, but I can't because this is against the law to use that. But I would like to use my voice as a parent, as, for the parents, to let them know that what is going on in school, I'm going to bring it to them, because I'm going to go out into the community. I'm going to be involved. Sitting up in here saying this stuff, I am a member of the community. I rarely see these trustees involved. Thank you.
Before we go, we have one last question to wrap up our evening. We, as voters, we find it very important to know what's important to you, and so before we wrap up tonight, we need to know, where do you get the best french fries in Arlington, Texas?
McDonald's.
In-N-Out?
In-N-Out? I'll have to say, uh, Mr. B's. Um, man, that's a tough one. Airways. I'm surprised you eat french fries. Uh, I think the best french fries are at Lazy Dog.
Thank you, guys, thank you, Y M A.